This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. Welcome to the Zephyr Hills Community Development Agency meeting of September 8th, 2025. Ricardo, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Lance Smith here. Stephen Spina?
Here.
Jody Wilkinson?
Here.
Your mic's off.
Here.
Kenneth Burgess?
Here.
Charles Proctor?
Here.
Mayor Munson?
Here.
William Poe? Matthew Maggar?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with the first business item. Ms. Hamilton, welcome?
Yes.
Approval, no, I'm sorry, the second item, the Jeffrey's House re-roof.
Okay.
Wait a minute. No, we gotta do the first one. Let me go back.
Okay.
Do we have some meeting minutes?
Can I have?
I'll make a motion that we pass.
Thank you.
1.1.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion passes. Second item, Ms. Hamilton.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. The Jeffrey's House re-roof, at the last meeting, we were asked to provide some additional information. The comments from our building official are in your packet, the information from the, from our public works director reviewing the contract. The additional, the addition of the squares for the roof is on there. So we are representing the re-roof of the Jeffrey's House. Yes, there have been questions about could we just repair it? It, it would take, according to our building official, between $15,000 and $20,000 to make those repairs. If we have a storm in October, which is, we all have our fingers crossed we do not. But that is one of the most, if not the most important building in the downtown area, and so we want to make sure that the roof is secure and that the building is secure.
Plus, the roof is about 30 years old.
And we could not, but you're exactly right, and we could not find where there have been any repairs or new roof done in the last 30 years.
Well, we checked with the previous owner, and they said it was about 1995, so, okay.
They did not get a permit, but I'm just saying.
All right. Do we have any comments or questions?
No, and I appreciate you putting the squares on there, and, and I would, I mean, I would like us to be able to bid several roofers. I don't know how, but I mean, if we did our own house, I think we would get more than one bid, but I understand why you did it. I get it. I understand why. But I think it would just be good if in the future we could look to get more bids. I know it might take a little more time, but, or if there's a way, we can not take as much time to get more than one, one person to bid, so.
So that brings up a question.
Well, I was just gonna say that, you know, I mean, we have gone this route so that we can speed processes up. So we, we're in a dilemma there, a bit of a dilemma in terms of how we go back about this if, you know, I'm not sure how to answer that question, so.
I just have, how did we come to the fact that only one person put a bid in on it?
Because we did the continuing services contracts, and we did roofing, and only one person responded to that RFP or RFQ. So that's how we ended up with one, and the idea was, and this was presented to council, anything under $75,000 that we needed to have taken care of quickly, we, we were not required to get more than one bid.
Okay.
As long as they were, it was under continuing services contract.
I kind of agree with Councilman Smith. I, I believe in a situation like this, I mean, because it's a lot of money that we should have three bids.
Well, we brought it up last time and, and suggest, you know, because there was only one bid, and then suggested that in the future that you get, you, under the continuing services, you can get quotes. And that way, we could at least, we're not going to, of actual bid, but we're getting quotes.
Yeah.
So we'll have an idea.
That would take a lot of time.
That would be great.
The prices are. So that's what we talked about.
All right, that's what we'll do. So from now on, staff will, using the continuing services contracts companies, we will get three quotes.
And if you're not using them, then you go to bid.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, and I had, because I had questioned, well, don't we need a roofing contractor to do it, but from what I understand, the Kerns have a roofing company.
Yes, they are.
So, I mean, they'll have to do, pull the permit, so the roofing.
Just one more question. I noticed the total is $39,700 and some change, but then it says, this estimate does not include the cost of potential wood sheathing and structural repairs.
So if you look at the entire scope, what they've done is, the cost of the roof is $36,000. The idea in that there might be rotten wood.
Is in that number?
That is correct. The difference is, because once we make a PO, that's what the funding is for, and, and we would have to come back to you to ask for additional funds. So there's about $2,600 in there that is for any incidentals.
Yeah, that's pretty typical for a roof bid as well.
Yeah, well, I just thought that that was above and beyond. Oh, we'd already been called in, so that's, that's good.
Okay.
I think that they do that just to cover themselves in case there's extensive damage that they couldn't, they couldn't anticipate.
Yeah, the, yeah, let me make the point, too, that should it come in, there's more roofed or plywood damage than what's anticipated, we could be back in front of council, sorry, commission, to ask for additional funds on this. So if, if they get in there and, I don't know what, $2,600 covers, 10 sheets of plywood.
Right.
If there's 15 sheets of plywood that are damaged, they're gonna have to, they will be asking for more money, so there is still a possibility that we come back.
Okay.
Well, if they have the roof open, they've got it.
They gotta do it, right, once it's open.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Yeah, once you open it.
If they got the.
Yeah.
Bid, maybe they would go lightly on us on something like that.
I'm sure they wouldn't.
Okay. Any other comments? Do I have your own motion then?
My move for approval.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cale.
Is that all we're doing today?
That's all we're gonna do tonight. We're gonna forego reports tonight.
We do have citizen comments on this agenda, and I understand somebody signed up to speak. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Dean Johnson?
I'm sorry? Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Cale?
Yes, sir.
Can you talk about playgrounds real quick? 30-second update?
On the what?
Playground equipment.
Oh, thank you, city manager. I just wanted to make the CRA board aware, the five parks that the playground equipment was chosen for, it has been ordered. We are, it is undertaken, so hopefully, and it includes all of the five parks installed, ready to go, once they're done, so we're on our way.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask one quick question. Have we begun working on getting surveys of all the parks? I know that some of the surveys, we, we, some of the parks, we didn't have accurate surveys.
That is correct. DC Johnson is working on. We got Ellis Herald Bank on Friday. They are doing all of the parks, so we will have current topo surveys of all of the parks.
Excellent. So that will help them when they do the install.
That is correct.
To make sure they're putting everything in the right spot.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
All righty.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other citizens like to make a comment? Question? No? Counsel? I mean, commission? No? All right, meeting adjourned. Here's your go.
Let's go.
Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
You want me to give her a minute to get in?
Okay.
I've got an agenda.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, September 8th, 2025, regular, 6:00 PM regular city council meeting. Ricardo, could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Lance Smith?
Here.
Stephen Spina?
Here.
Jody Wilkinson?
Here.
Kenneth Burgess?
Here.
Charles Proctor?
Here.
Mayor Munson?
Here.
William Poe?
Here.
Matthew Maggar?
Here.
All right. If we could have Rodney, if we could all stand, and Rodney will give the invitation, and then we will do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Mr. President. Heavenly Father, we're gathered here this evening, and we thank you and acknowledge you for all the hardworking men and women in our community and our country that keep us free from terrorist attacks and terrorism. We also thank you for all those who've given their life in the name of freedom over the years for our country. We know in the end that true everlasting freedom can only be achieved by holding your hand and acknowledging you and your wonderful grace, guidance, and love that you give freely to us each and every day. We ask and pray all these things in the name, Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I need my pen. We did, all right, now we're gonna move to citizens' comments. Is there anyone signed up, Ricardo?
I have Mr. Dean Johnson signed up.
Can I have my pen back? Thank you.
All right, he's withdrawn. I have Erica Freeman.
Erica Freeman, 37519 8th Avenue, Zephyr Hills, Florida 33542. I have two things, because I know we're gonna talk about the parks. So one, I, I think we need to remember to get the community involved, get the groups in, let us feel empowered that, and take ownership of the parks. Help keep them safe, clean, all of that. But number two, I think we need to remember that the parks are open from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM every single day, but somehow the bathrooms are not. They need to be open, because they're still being locked. I was just at Hercules a couple of months ago, and my friend had to go back to the car to change her son into a swim diaper, because the bathrooms were locked. We did not only have small kids in our community, we have elderly in our community, we have people with IBS and other gastro issues. They need the bathrooms right there, because otherwise, they're either going to have to use local businesses, which it's not fair on the local businesses, or they're either gonna go home early, they might not even come back because of their experience, or we might have public urination, which we also do not want in our parks. So please, just make sure we have open bathrooms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else signed up to speak, Ricardo?
I have no one else signed up to speak.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will move forward to the mayor.
He left out.
Super nice dude.
Yeah, very great.
There you go. You stand right beside this lovely gentleman. Yes. Thank you, guys, for coming. We invited some of your friends for this today, if you noticed that. But I've had the privilege to know this family probably since I was a little teeny girl, because their kids went to school with me, and their daughter was my sister's best friend. So I've known this family my whole life. But not only are they good friends and good stewards of our community, they are good citizens in our community, and they have served our community well. So I wanted to honor them. You just had your what birthday?
My 92nd.
92nd birthday. In 90, and so. And I want you to know, these, these folks are still serving their community at this age, so that's, that's an accomplishment. So I wanted to really just spend a few minutes expressing my gratitude to you. Whereas, the city of Zephyr Hills takes great pride in recognizing and honoring individuals whose enduring commitment and service have profoundly, profoundly enriched the fabric of our community. And whereas, Russ and Lee Heffelfinger, esteemed residents of Zephyr Hills since April 12th, 1968, have exemplified the highest ideals of civic engagement and community stewardship through their decades of residence. And whereas, Mr. Russ Heffelfinger served with distinct distinction as president of the Zephyr Hills Chamber of Commerce, both in 1972 and '73, becoming the first individual to hold consecutive terms, and together with Ms. Lee Heffelfinger, continued to serve as chamber ambassadors even today, earning the prestigious Ambassador of the Year Award and honorary membership. Whereas, Mr. Heffelfinger played a foundational role in establishing Guanis Club Number 17, 72, serving as Bryce Vice President and subs, man, I can't talk today, and as third president in 1974. And both he and Ms. Heffelfinger were instrumental in, in the formation of the Elks Lodge 273, and proudly became its second exalted ruler. Whereas, the Heffelfingers contributed to the economic vitality of Zephyr Hills through their entrepreneurial endeavors, including Mr. Heffelfinger's bookkeeping and tax business, and their collaborative work in the travel industry, booking excursions for seniors. Whereas, Mr. Heffelfinger honorably served the United States Army, beginning in 1952, stationed in Austria. I'm not gonna say the name. Whereas, he was joined by Ms. Heffelfinger. Together, they raised four children, exemplifying a lifelong commitment to family and service. And whereas, the Heffelfingers have borne witness to and actively participated in the transfer, transformation of Zephyr Hills from pastoral landscapes to thriving neighborhoods, they're not quite sure about that right now, and have remained steadfast contributors to the city's growth and communal spirit. Now therefore, I, Melanie Bar-Montson, mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby recognize and commend Russ and Lee Heffelfinger for their extraordinary legacy of community involvement, leadership, and service to the city of Zephyr Hills. Their enduring contributions shall, shall serve as a beacon of inspiration for generations to come.
Probably really appreciate it, too.
Only 25 more years to be.
What, really? That's it?
That's it.
Hey!
Thank you.
Hey, Dave. How are you, sir? Sorry.
All right, now we'll have the ladies of the DAR come on up. It is Constitution Week, so we're, we're doing a proclamation. How are you? Good to see ya. Both sides, we'll, we'll come on both sides. How about that? Three and three. That'll work. Whereas, Constitution Week is, is the commemoration of America's most important document. The United States Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. The commitment of the National Society, National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, NSDAR, is to encourage, study, and educate the public about the Constitution, which was adopted by the American Congress of the Confederation on September 17th, 1787. And whereas, the 249th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution provides a historic opportunity for all Americans to learn about and recap, recall the achievements of our founders, and to reflect on the rights and privileges of citizenship. And whereas, this celebration of the Constitution started by the Daughters of the American Revolution. In 1955, the NSDAR petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by US Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. George W. Bush officially declared the inception of the Constitution Week in 2020, 2002. Wow. Whereas, the Daughters of the American Revolution is the lineage-based membership service organization for women who are direct descendants of individuals who contributed to the United States' struggle for independence during the Revolutionary Period. Whereas, it is greatest, it is the greatest importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to support it, preserve it, and defend it against encroachment. And now therefore, I, Melanie Bar-Montson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills in the state of Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by diligently protecting the freedoms granted to us through this guardian of our liberties. Thank you.
I'm just gonna give these folks a minute if they want, anyone wants to leave. All righty, we have, we go to consent agenda items. We have six consent agenda items on the, on the agenda tonight. We can pass them all at once, or we can, if anyone wants to pull any for discussion, we can pull them.
Mr. President, I had just asked the city manager to kind of remind us what we were doing out at the airport on, there was a significant amount of money being spent, and I just wanted him to kind of review it one more time, or.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Nathan, listen to me. See, shake your head yes or no. So item 1.3 is, that's construction of the aprons at the tea hangers, and that's for the FAA to participate, and they'll pay 8%, 90%. They'll pay 90% of the cost. The next agreement is 1.4, and this is Hubbard Construction, to construct or reconstruct those aprons for those tea hangers. And then item 1.6, that's Stellar Development, and that is the agreement, the estate appropriation. And if you remember, that was to do the box, two box hangers, the taxiway foxtrot, and the FBO. At the last meeting, we requested that the FBO be removed from the requirement to be constructed, and the, the dollars of that appropriation were enough to cover one box hanger and taxiway foxtrot. So we, when we bid the project, we asked for alternate bids for box hanger number two. And so this is amendment to that agreement to add box hanger number two to the, to the total for $4.2 million, round numbers there.
Right, right. And I, and we had budgeted something in the budget, too, to cover a portion, a little proportion of that.
Correct, yes, sir. Yeah, so box hanger number two that you see on here, this is 100% paid by the city. Box hanger number one and foxtrot are covered by the estate appropriation.
Right. Again, Nathan, great job in getting the, the funds.
Yeah. Mr. President, also, Mr. Poe and I had a conversation earlier today about, just checking, when we do these extensions or renewals of these contracts, we wanna just make sure that there's no significant increase in hourly fees. that there's no significant increase in hourly fees. So I compared it to last year and the year before, and it seems within, you know, not excessively more than, for example, the cost of living increases.
Well, if there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval of the items, consent items. Thank you.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to item 2.1. Matthew?
Thank you, Mr. President. 2.1 is a first reading of the ordinance number 1506-25, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, levying the millage rate for the fiscal year 2025 through 2026 for the city of Zephyr Hills. This is a public hearing.
Right. Before I open up the public hearing, did you have something you want to?
No, we need that, you need to open it.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna open up the public hearing.
The millage rate ordinance that you have in front of you sets the millage for this upcoming fiscal year. It's an important responsibility. The rollback rate for the city of Zephyr Hills is calculated to be 6.0848 mils. In this ordinance, we are setting our millage rate at 6.25. The millage rate at 6.25 is considered a 2.71% increase according to Florida statute 200.065. And it's important that be read into the record.
I thought that was the same millage rate last year.
It's the same millage rate. The rollback rate is what would generate the same amount of revenue.
Okay, okay, I see.
Right, so it's a technical rate increase, and that's the reason it's read into the record.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone in the, did you have anything else?
I do not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'll turn it over to council.
Mr. President, I move that we accept ordinance number 1506-25, setting the millage rate at 6.25 mils, which is more than the rollback rate of 6.0848 mils computed pursuant to the Florida statutes. And this amount will raise.
Well, that's all, thank you.
I'll second.
A motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We will move to 2.2.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 2.2 is first reading of the ordinance number 1507-25, ordinance of the City Council, the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, adopting a budget for the 2025 through 2026 fiscal year. This also is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna open up the public hearing.
Sure. The budget that we have go ahead and had two previous workshops on is $136 million in total expenditures. Of that, $70 million is capital expenditures, including $27 million for the public works facility and $16 million for Zephyr Park as part of that capital improvements program. Therefore, almost the entire increase, if you looked at last year's budget versus the proposed budget for this upcoming year, is in the capital expenditures. And with that, I'll open myself up for any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions?
Mr. President, yes, I have a question. Mr. Beeson, I talked with the city manager regarding this matter. I just thought it was kind of interesting, under the category administration, we went from $1.5 million last year to over $10 million this year. Can you talk a little bit about, this is monies that is being used for this purpose?
Yeah, it's actually funds that are going to be recognized as our use of fund balance and also retaining fund balance at the end of the year. So there's a category in there that'll say like, $9 million retained contingency that the council's going to approve as part of this budget. For the first time this year, we went ahead and said, hey, we're anticipating $11.2 million we're gonna carry forward from the previous fiscal year. We even nudged that up and said we're gonna have $2 million more. So we recognize carry forward, and we also recognize the fact that we have a contingency, and that contingency is $9 million in admin, and that's where it's parked.
And we're hoping not to have to use that.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and the carry forwards, they're allocated?
Yes, sir, they are. It's in there, $3.2 million use of fund balance in the revenues. And again, at the end of the year, we anticipate that we're gonna have $9 million, well above the $5 million threshold that you set at last council meeting, to say you want to retain that for storms, other emergencies.
And can I ask one other question? And this is a little unfair, but I'm gonna do it anyway. There's going to be a panel that is a special committee put together by the governor that's gonna look at eliminating the ad valorem taxes on homestead property. What would that do to the city's revenue, roughly?
Quite a dent. I would only be shooting from the hip and saying, millions of dollars that would be taken out of our ability to tax and collect those revenues, but a real hole in the city's budget.
Right.
And not just us, I mean.
No, it's counties, it's school boards, it's everything. So unless we want to take a significant hit in revenue and have response times for police be delayed, see the library be shut down, see parks probably closed, we need to contact people and let them know that this will be devastating to us. Because I'm telling you, it's gonna, they're gonna try and put it on the ballot, if it gets on the ballot, it's gonna pass. So we have to be proactive now, and don't think it can't happen because they're meeting on it, so.
Right, so I will, if I can just add on to that, I think it's roughly 40%-ish hit to our general fund. But also, reach out to our senator, reach out to our representative. Rep. Maggard had a meeting several weeks ago, brought in all the constituents, all the constitutionals, the cities, and had conversations around it, wanted to know what the true impact was. And I also, I forwarded some information to the council from the Florida League about what property taxes do, how they're spent, what services they provide. And there also should have been a packet in there that was specific to Zephyr Hills. So if you did not get that, let me know, and I'll make sure I resend that. But yeah, it is a pretty serious issue that we need to be on top of and start looking at now.
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, the general fund, the ad valorem taxes equals about $10 million, and the police department alone is an $8 million budget. So that would be a real threat to security, public safety as well.
Sorry about that, Ted, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I thought it was important.
Billy, did you have anything?
I do, I need to add, I know I've been able to speak to a couple of you. So the CDBG grant that we applied for, we were not funded. We're still looking into it because it appears that we scored higher than other municipalities that were funded, so we're looking in to see why we were not. So part of the funding for City Yard and, well, the whole project of Zephyr Park, instead of it having $5 million of CDBG funds, that'll be additional $5 million that we need to get bond financing for. So I wanted to put that on the record, that that is a shift, that's one of the changes that you've seen in the budget here. But we're addressing it, we're working on it, and we're trying to figure out why we were not funded.
And let me ask one question about that. When the bonds are funded, they go out for the bond issue, the bonds are purchased, we have the whole amount of the bond issue. And if I understand right, we could go ahead and apply for next year the CDBG, but as far as prepaying any of the bonds, there's a, you can't do that for a certain amount of time.
10 years that you'd have to wait before you could do a refinancing. Yes, we'll have the funds in hand before we start a big public works project, we have to have funds in hand, and we can earn interest on those funds, yes.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions for Ted? Ricardo, is there anyone signed up to speak to this issue?
No, sorry, I have no one signed up to speak to this.
Is there anyone in the county, in the audience that wants to speak to item 2.2? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to council.
Mr. President, I move approval of the city budget.
A second?
I have a motion in a second to approve 2.2, the city budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number three, the utility directors report.
So John is online?
Yes, I am, and I apologize for not being there today. I've had a personal issue I had to take care of this afternoon. And this is John Bosick, City of Zephyr Hills Utilities Director. On the agenda is approval of the piggyback agreement with HST Utilities for a meter replacement. The plan for the utilities department is to replace approximately 10,000 meters that were not placed or replaced back in 2016, I think it was, when Fathom came in. And these, we're gonna tackle them in over a three-year period of time. The plan is to tackle 3,500 this year, 3,500 next year, and the balance the year after. This will also include a backflow preventer replacement and valves if they are needed. And this contract is with HST, who we've had experience with when we did a lead service line inventory a few months back, and they were very, very, excuse the word, awesome to deal with. They knew exactly what they're doing, know exactly what they needed to provide, and they did a wonderful job. And they came up with a piggyback for us to, well, piggyback upon. And in front of you, this is what is presented for your approval tonight. Just a piggyback agreement.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, John, thank you for being on tonight. I just have one question. I saw on there that these meters don't have any moving parts. Does that, does that mean, I mean, obviously, if they don't have moving parts, then the life on them has to be much longer, isn't it?
Well, for the most part, yes, but the accuracy lasts a whole lot longer.
Right.
The accuracy of the meters, because over time, the movable parts, meters, they start recording less and less.
Right. Okay, thank you, I sure appreciate it.
Anytime.
Any other questions?
This work was part of our budget for this fiscal year, is that correct?
This coming fiscal year to follow, in October, there will be a proposal to do the first phase of the work.
Yeah, so the work will begin fiscal year '26, then '27, '28. We're just trying to get ahead of the game.
Thank you, thank you for being proactive. Thank you, Mr. Bosick.
Thank you. Anytime, thank you.
All right, is anyone signed up to speak to this item?
No, Mr. President, no.
Okay, thank you. I move that we approve the piggyback agreement as noted in item 3.1.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
I greatly appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, John. Utility directors report.
Public director.
I mean, yeah. Public Works.
Good evening, Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. I have a memo in your packet, I'm just gonna give a little brief overview. Everybody remembers, I'm not even gonna bring up the H-word, but we had a couple of name storms last year with biblical rain amounts, 18 inches of rain in 12 hours, and we all know what happened. Currently, the stormwater department is a general fund-funded department, and the stormwater department competes with other, the police department, and parks department, and streets, and other general fund departments, so there's not a lot of money to complete capital improvements with. So a quick little presentation of the scope of work. We're gonna implement a stormwater utility fee in an effort to generate revenue dedicated to stormwater management and future capital improvements. So with me, I have Jennifer Tavantes. She's from Raff Tillis, she's the vice president, and she traveled all the way from Durham, North Carolina, to speak to the council tonight. So if I can, I'll turn it over to Jen.
All right, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Jennifer Tavances, my address is 2 West Haven Place, Durham, North Carolina, 27705.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of council, thank you so much for your time this evening. I'm here to talk to you about the project to implement a new stormwater utility fee. So as you've heard, this can be a new funding mechanism dedicated to funding your stormwater management program, capital projects, as well as ongoing operation and maintenance. I'm gonna give you a little bit of detail about the elements of the scope. I hope it's not too much detail, but better know sooner or later, I suppose. So right from the start of this project, we're gonna be working on two parallel tracks. The first is to kind of understand and document the scale and the scope of your existing stormwater management program. So what all are you doing currently, who's involved, how much does it cost, and then where are the gaps? So any master planning, vulnerability assessments, known kind of capital needs. I understand that those can be kind of known by staff, they can be documented in many places, and we want to kind of pull it all together to figure out what is the need, what's the future outlook for stormwater management here in the city. On the other parallel track, we'll be thinking kind of early on about how a new fee might be billed. You all are in the fortunate position of having two good options for billing a new fee. You can do so on a utility bill, or you can do so through the county's tax bill. That latter option requires some coordination with the county and a specific timeframe where decisions have to be made right at the turn of the calendar year or soon after. So we want to kind of get right on that decision-making. So from there, we will, like I said, kind of build out your financial plan associated with stormwater management, and we'll start looking at how the necessary revenue might be recovered from rate payers here in the city, and what kind of makes sense from an equity and revenue sufficiency standpoint as far as a rate structure. And so we'll kind of iterate with staff on that process. All of that will kind of culminate in a final plan and rate model that takes into account things like financial policies, if we want to look at a credit program to acknowledge kind of individual stormwater management, that sort of thing. So a comprehensive look there. Our scope also includes some stakeholder engagement. You all have methods and means of engaging with your public already, huge turnout here tonight, so obviously, that's working well. So our scope is really just to kind of support you with, you know, materials, handouts, fax figures, whatever you need to promote that engagement. It is gonna be important that your public is informed and aware and able to have their questions answered as you're going through this process. Let's see, that also includes support with trim notices, which would have to be sent out to the public if you choose to bill via the tax bill. We will work with you to develop a new stormwater utility ordinance, so documentation of how the fee works, how it's billed, how it's calculated, what the recourse is if customers have questions or concerns. We'll work together with your attorney to make sure that that's kind of dialed in before it comes to this body for approval. And then all of that will get wrapped up in a final report, which I'm sure you will have the pleasure of reviewing. And the last item in our scope is just to kind of do the technical work to create a billing file for whatever mechanism ends up conveying this new charge. So that is the, that's the scope of work, that's what we're looking at. It's, I have a schedule in here somewhere, we're planning to have it all wrapped up by April, depending on how you end up choosing to bill. Bills may go out later in the summer, but that's sort of the time for the analysis and the effort here. Happy to take any questions, or?
Any questions?
Thank you, and thank you for coming all the way from North Carolina, too. I'm sure you love this nice humid weather we have here. Do we have to do a stormwater master plan and do estimated costs prior to figuring out what the assessment's gonna be?
You don't have to. It can be a useful input as we're doing this analysis initially, but you can also kind of do this analysis and get a program off the ground and generate some revenue to fund a bigger master planning effort, so. um, a bigger master planning effort. So, um, I've certainly seen it work both ways, and we'll work with whatever data you have already. And honestly, staff know a good deal about what's needed, and so I think we'll, we'll have a good starting point.
Okay, cuz I didn't know, I know in the utility side, we have to have some nexus for, you know, we have to prove this
Yep.
is what we need.
Yep.
So, so we do, we, we do, okay, and well, okay, so we can get updated costs on that, cuz we know it's gonna be different costs. So if we can use that, as long as, as long as attorney says it's okay, or somebody, or, or Dark Matt says it's all right, either one. But, but, but the other, the other question, the, yeah, could you call him, please? Um, but the other question that I have, or, or statement I have is I, I don't think we should put, look at putting it on utility bills. That's just me, cuz I could see a public outcry, them come running down here. So, I, I mean, if we can squelch that right now, I think that might not be a bad idea.
Well, yeah, it needs to be a property owner-based fee anyway, I think. And I think the, the tax bill is more reliable and, um, fair.
It's more fair, right, because some people may have water service, but other properties may not have water service, and they may be, you know, vacant properties, for example, and they may be, you know, a watershed from their property may be stressing our, our existing systems. So I would say that, uh, I, I, I concur with, uh, the other council members that, um, that that's probably a equitable, more equitable way to do it. The only challenge is that then we have to deal with recouping that money from the county, and is there a cost for that?
So, so there is a cost. There was a, another place I used to work. I won't name them. Um, at the time, we were using the, the tax collector as well. Um, highly recommend that process. That way, utility billing doesn't have to deal with another bill and the complaint that my utility bill is too high, even though it's stormwater that's raising. Anyhow,
Doesn't matter.
Um, there is a fee, I think it's six percent, four, four percent or six percent that the tax collector will charge, um, of the fees collected. Property appraiser.
That's a lot.
That's the, that's the going rate. Yeah, there's not a, there's not a negotiation. And I, and I could be wrong on that, but we'll pay, we'll pay a percentage to the property appraiser and the tax collector, just gotta be on the bills. So we'll do all that, and then in November, we get our check. And, um, as bills get paid, you know, November, December through April, we get our funding. So I think it's a much cleaner way. Um, and honestly, people look at their, their tax bill and their mortgage rate. It probably won't even move the needle on, on what their monthly payment is, but if they see it every month on the utility bill, it moves the needle quite a bit. So, um, I agree with the recommendation that we need to do it on the tax bill.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think that helps, actually, if we can get that consensus tonight, cuz then we just follow one track, and that's the way we're going.
Can I ask Calvin a question? What do we charge the school board for transfer of the impact fees? Do you know? Yeah, we, we charge them a percentage for collecting the impact fee and sending it to them. One percent?
See, we're getting ripped off.
Yeah.
Yeah. We may have to look at that.
Well, and the school board fee is, is not based on any, um, you know, it's based on the entire, uh, market value of your, of the property, not just the, you know, adjusted one for, uh, homestead exemption, so.
Do we have any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve this piggyback agreement with Martin County for Raff Tillis.
Second.
Second.
Second. And I was gonna say, and that we pursue the, uh, tax bill.
Doing it through the tax bill, yeah. Versus us doing it in-house.
So all right, let's have a second.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
City managers report.
Um, sorry. Um, so this evening, we have the GAI team. Not sure who's actually doing the presentation. Kristen, okay, um, to present the Phase Two Parks Master Plan.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me back. It's been quite a journey. I'm really excited to be here. Through the end, Kristen Kayborn. I'm the Parks and Public Spaces Director for GAI Consultants. I also have two of our team members with me in the back, Andrea Pinwella, Senior Landscape Architect, and Amy Zangatita, our Parks and Recreation Planner. So we are at the end of the project. I'm gonna very quickly, um, take you back through a refresher of what we've been through to get to this point tonight. And then I'm gonna go do a run-through of the recommendations, um, that are a result of the planning process. So just to remind you all, the purpose of the master plan was, um, in Phase One, we took your plan in two phases. In Phase One, we assessed all of your existing conditions. We looked at all of your beautiful parks. We got to know your residents through the public input process and the survey. Um, from there, we began to move into visioning, which creating the blueprint for the future and where the park investments in the future make the most sense, based on what we saw on the ground and what we heard from the public. And then finally, um, the goal of any Parks and Recreation Master Plan is to increase the quality of life for your residents. Um, Parks and Recreation Master Plans are focused on your residential population. What makes people, um, really enjoy living here, getting to know their community, and participating in their community. So, um, I reminded you that this project was undertaken in two phases. Um, Phase One goes back to February of 2024, so here we are a year and a half later. Um, it's really been very exciting. And we've loved, um, the opportunity to get to know Zephyr Hills better. So, um, just a reminder, in Phase One, we kicked off the project. We did the, um, existing conditions analysis. Y'all got to see the GIS dashboard with all of the conditions of your existing parks and the way that, um, we reviewed them, um, as well as demographics, population projections, the research of the market, um, when we talk about that, of course, that's what's going on in the surrounding cities, as well as Pasco County Parks and Recreation, and then the public input part of the process. So Phase Two, the phase that we're wrapping up now, is looking at the future expansion of your park system. Um, the areas that we need to target to, um, to increase your capacity as the population grows. Um, working with Pasco County, we've been having some really great conversations with Pasco County, um, and Gail as we've moved through this process. I'll talk about that a little bit when I get into recommendations. Um, and then creating the visioning, the guiding principles, um, I'll remind you of those that we went through last time. Looking at the goals and objectives, how they tie into your comprehensive plan. Um, and then looking at some basic standards for your, um, park design moving forward. SEPTED, which is that big acronym that stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, and incorporating that into your parks, as well as some sustainability guidelines. And then the fun at the end of the project, how much is all of this gonna cost? So we'll talk a little bit about the recommendations. Um, so looking at future expansion, um, this map will probably look familiar to you all. Um, this is the map, um, that is looking at the condition of your existing parks overlaid with the walkability. So we looked at the 10-minute walk area. We heard extensively from the public how important it was for them to be able to walk to their local park, um, their close-to-home parks after hours after school, um, or after business hours after school. So this is overlaying our assessment of these parks. The good news about this is Ms. Hamilton has already begun to implement some of the recommendations as the master plan. Um, and these park scores are automatically gonna go up, because y'all have some great new playgrounds that are gonna be going in across the city. So, um, we'll talk a little bit more about that as the recommendations. But, um, so this map is showing you how people are able to walk this, this true walking using sidewalk and pedestrian networks. Um, and then the condition of the parks, of the areas that they serve. This begins to give us, um, the opportunity to look at across the city, how are your existing parks serving their surrounding neighborhoods, and builds the framework and the case for the recommendations. So the guiding principles, um, we broke them up again. Um, this is what we presented the last time, that I was fortunate enough to be in front of you all. Um, we broke it up into how can we improve Parks and Recreation today? How can we improve what you already have? And then how can we improve Parks and Recreation in Zephyr Hills, looking into the future as your population does continue to grow and is projected to continue to grow? So, um, last time I had an individual slide for each of these guiding principles. This is just summarizing them. Um, I'm not gonna read it to you, but looking at today, uh, the four guiding principles underneath that are maintaining and improving what you have. Looking at walkability and connectivity, this is not only within your parks, but also to your parks, and as new parks come onto, online, um, looking at that as well. Enhancing user experience and comfort, things like shade, things that are gonna make people feel more comfortable in parks, um, multi-generational activities in the same sites. And then, um, working on communication and looking at integrated strategies to brag about the wonderful assets y'all have here in Zephyr Hills. And then looking into the future, how your Parks and Recreation system is going to grow into the future of the city. Um, delivering your park system as it is keeping up with the growth and with the population increases here, and your residential population, um, changing, the demographics changing a little bit, and making sure that you all are providing programs and services that are relevant to the demographics as they change. Increasing the overall program offerings, looking at ways, um, to potentially do partnerships in the city, beginning to offer it, offer some of their own programming. Um, building recreation places, we'll talk a little bit more about that specifically in the recommendations, but, um, some actual recreation facilities that provide the opportunity to provide, um, the physical space required to have recreation. And then expanding your operations as, um, Zephyr Hills grows, enhancing the quality of life for people who live here. So looking at the park site standards, um, again, this is something, just a review. One thing that we looked at is, since you all have a lot of developers who are gonna be coming into Zephyr Hills in the future, what does a neighborhood park look like in the city of Zephyr Hills? And the reason, one of the reasons why this is important, especially when you see the minimum size of two acres, that's not intended to be so prescriptive, that if you have someone come forward with an acre and a half, that you're like, no, we have to have two acres. However, the idea is, if you can have at least two-acre parks, you're going to be able to accommodate the basic infrastructure that became important as part of the public input process in close-to-home parks. So we're looking at the ability to walk. We're looking at open space. Open space is one of the most important things in a park, where people can throw a frisbee or kick a ball around, um, just unprogrammed space. Um, and if you get a lot below two acres, you lose. That's typically the part that you lose the most access to, is the open green space. Um, a play area, a sports court, we don't care what that sports court looks like. Um, I know that there's a lot of people in Florida that would pave, um, all of our sports courts with pickleball, but that's up to the neighborhood where the park is going to be going in. Lighting is appropriate. Um, our days are getting shorter now. It's the time of year where, um, hopefully in another couple of months, it'll be beautiful out at 5:30, and people are gonna be able to wanna access parks after work, um, when it's, when it's only 5:30. Crosswalks from surrounding areas to keep it, um, to be very safe. But one of the reasons that having a park standard is important is that if you find yourself in the position to negotiate with developers for them to develop a park and turn it over to the city, um, allowing you all to not have to make the capital investment, this gives them a roadmap. It's not so, again, so prescriptive that they can't do things that they feel might be um, applicable to their neighborhood and to their future residents. But it also helps the city have a little bit to go on and say, this is how we are, um, striving to have our close-to-home parks in Zephyr Hills, provide services to our residents. So on to the new stuff, the recommendations. So we've broken this up into current recommendations, which would be your current fiscal year, which actually would be, um, Gail has started working on some of these now, but then, starting October 1st, would be current, and then we have short-term, midterm, long-term. So, um, your current, your current recommendations, and these were specifically, we worked with Gail to, uh, divide them up so the city isn't undertaking any large chunks that, um, in any one given timeframe. And also to be able to have an impact across your entire park system. So we're trying to break up the expenses and make sure that there's not large expenses in any one given fiscal year, period of time. But also, the residents across Zephyr Hills will be able to begin to see some of these improvements. So looking at standardizing your park signage throughout the system, so people will know that they're in a city of Zephyr Hills Park. Creating that identity, y'all have the great logo, you've got the, um, the tagline, so beginning to upgrade the signage throughout the system. And then really excited for your five playground replacements going on throughout the city. We've got some, um, of the graphics here provided as part of the playground designer. Um, really exciting colors, very active spaces. I think the kids in Zephyr Hills are really gonna like this, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be a really exciting change for them in seeing some of this modern equipment and modern and fun colors. Uh, then looking at some specific improvements, um, again, some of these are just very simple to do, but will, uh, make an impact. Looking at Depot Park, crosswalks into the park to provide safe crossings. Um, sidewalk connections to picnic tables and replacing the surface. That will help increase the ADA access and overall accessibility of the park. And then bike racks. Bike racks are something that are simple, but, um, if you provide them, you might start to see people, um, actually riding their bikes to the parks. Gunner Paw Park, I can never say that without stumbling over it. Add dog park equipment and seating, uh, provide a bike rack, and then parking lot, add some shade trees and lighting. Ellis Harold, we are looking at, again, sidewalk connections and a bike rack. At Veterans Memorial Park, um, restripe the parking lot, adding some wheel stops, lighting, and shade trees, and then replace the crepe myrtles that have reached the end of, end of their life. At Z Venue, this is, um, a site that we think that there's really an opportunity to, um, expand and the offerings beyond the special events that are taking place there. Um, so that would be a site-specific master plan process. And where that differs from an overall master plan, um, of course, this process is looking at the 10,000-foot level at the city as a whole, at the distribution of parks throughout the city, and how um, the park system can grow with the population. A site-specific master plan is really putting pen to paper on a, on a specific site. Looking at the puzzle pieces, looking at the, what's actually gonna go here. Um, it would have specific public meetings, meetings with you all to talk about, um, what those improvements might look like. And then, um, much more detailed cost estimates associated with that, um, than you get at the master planning, master, uh, system planning level as part of this. And then, yes.
May I interrupt?
Yes.
Yes, please.
All right.
I'll breathe.
I'm glad, uh, yeah. You gotta take a breath. I'm really glad to see these kinds of improvements there. I think the walking trail, um, the event lawn. Um, more, oh, trade, trees, but in a, in a way that doesn't interfere with anything. I like the connection with Ellis Harold Park. The other thing I was thinking was, and I had mentioned this to the city manager, was next year is the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. And I was thinking that maybe we could do some kind of naming. This was given to it, this probably was given us, to us by the US government, the army, it was an army base. And I thought maybe we should look at renaming it. We've, we've struggled with what we call it all the time. And I was
The Z Venue?
The Z Venue, yeah. I was thinking of doing, you know, maybe tying it into the, um, anniversary, maybe doing, uh, 4th of July, something there, event there. Maybe calling it, you know, Founder's Field or Patriot Park or something, since it's got the army connection to it. And, and really kind of like you're mentioning here, engage it and, and make it useful. There's people that live right next to it.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and right around the corner. And, I mean, I think so. I'm really excited about, you know, some of the things that could be done there as well.
I think that's so, that's so interesting. You could have a, a special event to celebrate that, but, uh, we love doing public input as part of special events. Um, we last fall did, uh, Harvest Festival, and we, at, uh, the city of Winter Springs up in central Florida, um, they were working on the, we were working on the master plan for one of their large parks. And we got so much input, because so many people come to special events. And that was something, if you move forward with doing a site-specific master plan, you could have your consultant set up a tent, lots of activities. We did scavenger hunts for the kids to go out and look at different aspects and come back and give us feedback. So there's a lot of opportunity there, and since this is a, um, one of the recommendations for your October 1st, that's just a couple of weeks away, fiscal year, a lot of the work to gear up to a special event like that, you've got time, so.
Yeah, we could do it, like you said, when it's a little cooler.
Yeah.
We don't wanna do it in July, and, and do it when it's cooler and get ideas and, and input and then
Absolutely.
start that. But I think, you know, that's a, I think that's a real plus.
And I think to follow up on, uh, what you're saying, if you remember the bicentennial, that wasn't just like a 4th of July that year. There was things going on that entire year. So we could utilize that where there could be multiple things happening throughout the year, leading up to the 4th of July.
And we have a great stage there.
Right, right.
Mm-hmm.
And do other things, so, you know, kind of remind people it's there and what it has to offer and things. to offer and things.
Absolutely. I love it. The other projects we have listed are an ADA transition plan. We, we noted some ADA opportunities during the inventory process, but your transition plan would be, of course, as you begin to renovate parks, you've got to make sure that you're providing the ADA access to, in complete compliance with that. And then looking at operations and a maintenance master plan, right now, as you all know, you've got Public Works maintaining your parks and making sure that they, as you're making these infrastructure investments, Shane and his team is doing such a wonderful job at maintaining your parks, but making sure that you've got the staff to continue to maintain these things to the level for new infrastructure and making them welcoming. Anything on current?
Yes, I have a quick question. So, one of our local residents, I don't know if you were here for this, but she mentioned the challenges that folks have with, with being able to use the restrooms during the hours that the parks are open, you know, and that we have to balance with, you know, potential for vandalism and things like that. So, that's one issue that I hope that you address as part of this, this goal. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was, we went past Gunner Park, but I think that there's a level of design related to dog parks that probably needs to be considered as we develop that idea and the, and the master plan and, and dealing with that. And one thing in particular that I think I've talked to Public Works about is the watering stations. So, in the summertime, as you know, it gets very, very hot, and if you just have the water over ground, it gets all muddy and nasty. If you have it over concrete, you know, the dogs standing on the hot concrete can damage their pads. So, there's a, some material changes and maybe misting, you know, opportunities, things like that, those, those need to be considered, I think, as we develop those parks a little bit more.
Absolutely. Yes.
Nothing further.
Yeah, and I thank you for the presentation. And I just, I, I was reading through it, pretty, pretty extensive, and I wondered if part of what we should put in the long-range plan is a multipurpose trail system connecting all the parks. I mean, it wasn't specifically outlined, but I think that should be specifically outlined in there. The other thing, because I had brought it up in the last year, I think we ought to set a goal to plant 200 trees a year throughout the city, and many of them probably should be in the parks, because that, that's an easy one. We lost who knows how many trees last year.
Yeah.
And you, and in a normal year, you still lose some, some, some good trees. And, and I wondered if possibly the, the crepe myrtles maybe should be some, a different tree that, because I think most of those are near the, the parking area, I think. So, maybe it should be something that would provide a little more shade than a crepe. It's just a, just a thought. The other thing that I think that all the landscaping in it should be Florida-friendly, IFIS, if we don't do that, we're just wasting our money. And, well, there was, oh, the other thing I saw in there was it said, one of the strategies was possibly to purchase HOA-owned parks, and I didn't quite understand that. Why, why would you, why would you do that?
Well, there's quite a few sheets here, yeah, there's quite a few pages here that talks about HOA parks, and, you know, my problem with HOA parks is they're not accessible to everyone.
Right.
So, I, I wouldn't even consider those as part of our park system.
No, and, and we, we didn't, I'm not exactly sure, I'd have to have a page number to make sure that we had some clarification. I've got my team back here can make sure that we can clarify specifically that what that was saying. We definitely would not have, I don't believe the recommendation was for you, the city, to purchase HOA parks. There are some areas of the city where it might be difficult for the city to acquire land, and the HOA, the HOAs may be covering the needs for the close-to-home parks, but that's not necessarily a business you'd want to get into. But if y'all find specifically what it is, we're happy to explain it more.
But on that topic, it's on the, on your slide, the 10-minute walk.
Land acquisition strategies considers existing HOA parks.
Oh, that's not to buy it, that's, we're considering where you have existing park, HOAs have parks, so we are lowering the priority for the city to acquire land in those areas because we're assuming that they're a little, that they already have their close-to-home needs. That's not to say that those areas shouldn't eventually be covered by a city park, but they're not living in a park desert.
I got you.
Okay.
The land acquisition strategy considers the existing HOA park, not considers acquiring existing.
No.
That's very similar to the consideration of San Pasco Park, which is a county park, but is right on the southern.
Yes.
Boundary of.
That would, that one's a public park, so there, that, there would be no restriction for accessing that whatsoever, so that would definitely be what we would call an influencing amenity, and the people who live near that would have, have park access, which is great.
And I think that we should look at, when we're doing our plan reviews, and you mentioned this with new developments and more growth, that we should require developers to, to dedicate an acre or so, depending on the size of the property, I guess, the project, but dedicate property in that park, require them to do a park and build out a park as part of the plan.
That would be great, that's what, part of the reason why we have park standards, to give you all a negotiating tool.
Use of the residents or what?
Yeah, they're have it there, then, then, I mean, imagine if, you know, I mean, some of these, how many homes are in Zephyr Square?
Over 600 families.
515.
So, that's what, 1,200, 1,500 people? They have their own park? That helps our standards in other areas, like you said, but I think that should be required and part of the plan approval.
All right, even if it's a small development, you know, even if it's a half an acre or whatever, or a little dog park or something like that.
Right, a green space, something that they have.
Yeah, if I can, because I was not here, but I'll give kudos to the planning department. With Abbott Square, there is the amenity center, but there's also walking trails that go out into the wetlands, and Abbott.
Abbott Park?
And then Abbott Park, that has a dog park, an amenity center, and then there's, I don't, well, you have all the ponds, I think, I guess you could fish in, but there is an amenity center, center along with the dog park on the north or south, southeast corner of that property. So, staff have been looking at trying to add some of those parks in those subdivisions.
Yeah, the challenge is really, the, you know, the older part of downtown, for example, North Avenue and 13th Street, that, you know, over there where it's all residential, it's been built out, that acquiring land in that area might be part of the long-term plan.
Right, and that's why we aren't saying that, with the park standards, we're saying two acres would be great. The other reason for that, if you can get two acre park, one two acre parcel is easier to maintain than three parcels that are an acre here, a half acre there, a half acre there. So, but if something certainly becomes available in this area that is smaller than two acres, and it's affordable, and it's in your targeted land acquisition map area, grab it, I mean, for sure. That's, it leads us to short-term recommendations, right at the bottom of the, of this slide is looking for land acquisition over the next two years in the areas that are indicated on the map and the report, but actively looking for that land, land's never going to be cheaper than it was yesterday. So, I'm looking at that as you're moving forward. But going back up to the top of the short-term recommendations, so this would be looking at October 1st, 2026, and starting to think of that for your short-term. Again, this, master plans these days are not phone book, I remember what a phone book looks like, are not phone book-sized reports, they are meant to be living documents, so if something comes up that's in short-term, we're not saying, well, GAI said this is an until short-term and it's current year, by all means, move forward. Gail has our spreadsheet, it's an Excel document, things can be shifted between fiscal years very easily. But short-term, you've got your existing site-specific master plan for Zephyr Park. This is along the same lines of what we're talking about for Z venue, creating something like this specifically for Z venue. Implementing the master plan and the recommendations for Clock Plaza Park. Depot Park, providing lighting along pathways, again, having opportunities to safely walk. Transplant Park, interior sidewalk and a little free library. I can't emphasize enough interior sidewalks and safe walking areas in parks. I think you'll find that as people have walking trails around playgrounds or ballfields, that you'll start to see more and more people going out to parks in the evening and just walking loops for exercise. So, we heard that in the public input process, and that's something that is very popular. Looking at the YMCA property, you know, the future of what is going to go on with the building isn't determined now, but the city does own the surrounding land. Looking at potentially replacing the playground, adding a picnic area there, so people who are utilizing the playground, and again, that walking loop. At Z venue, talking about beginning to implement the site-specific master plan, so current fiscal year, looking at doing the site-specific master plan, and then as in fiscal year, October 26, starting to look at beginning to phase some of the recommended improvements, which would, of course, first be construction documents and assume that the improvements are going to be phased. And then on midterm, two to five years, one thing that I want to note is really important for five years is, five years is the threshold that we recommend that you do an interim update to the master plan. So, every 10 years is a fresh look at the project, every five years is some updated public input, testing to see your short and current year recommendations, what have been implemented, and then in five years, talking to the public and seeing what hasn't yet been implemented, are they still a priority, what are the new priorities, a fresh look at the demographics and populations, and make, just touching base with the public and seeing what's pertinent and what's still relevant moving forward. So, before that midterm look ahead, we'd be looking at adding a sports court at Depot Park. Again, it would be talking about, talking to the residents around there, what do they want? Do they want to play basketball, do they want to play pickleball, tennis, whatever it may be. Shepherd Park, Shepherd Park, doing a site-specific master plan and beginning implementation. Shepherd Park is really important geographically to the city, it's one of the first venues that they're, that your residents are going to see when they're driving in, and that really has an opportunity to be a gateway and to be, aside from Zephyr Park, another one of your very visible signature parks in the city. Adding a sports court or field to Veterans Memorial Park, again, talk to the neighbors, see what they want, and add it. And then looking at the other projects, this is beginning to implement new Park A, so in the short-term, you're looking for land for new Park, and then beginning to actually improve that new Park A. And then finally, the Recreation Center master plan, this has a lot of opportunity with Pasco County, this is what Gail and I have been talking to Keith Wiley about over at Pasco County Parks and Recreation, so this very much is likely going to look like a partnership between Zephyr Hills and Pasco County, and I think that's really exciting for you all. And then long-term, this is your five-plus years, again, these are the recommendations that we would say, your check-in in five years, how have we been doing, what else do we need to do, and then testing to see what here is still relevant. So, begin to implement new Park B, which is in the northern part of the city, Newport, New Park C over on further west in the city. Again, this goes back to the HOA park questions.
Yeah, I mean, why would we do that in a private community?
Well, that's just a targeted area for land acquisition, and the reason why this is following, following to long-term is we're assuming that their HOAs are taking care of their close-to-home parks. So, if you see there's a faint kind of radius around that, it would be looking for public parkland in that area. Again, those are residences of Zephyr Hills, and the city of Zephyr Hills providing public park services regardless of them living in a private community, but we're not recommending any specific site. And this is five years out to start to be able to cover, C and D are starting to be able to cover projected growth into those areas over time. So, this is all following the acquire land, begin to implement, acquire land, begin to implement, and these are pushed out to long-term just as a check-in to see, see how the city's doing, how the city's growing, and, and what that looks like. And then the one on there that's not, of course, related to the new park land acquisition or implementation would be the implementation of a recreation center, and most likely to take place with Pasco County as a partner.
So.
I know, I was like.
I think we have our parks.
Just a reminder, Todd Vandenberg, Plan Director, we've had in the comprehensive plan for a couple of decades now, the importance and priority of a north side city park, and although we have it here on the long-term, concern would be is, those properties are going to begin developing where we have land large enough to purchase property for the size of park we probably need on the north side of the city. So, we've had ongoing discussions about what that would be, but it, I would say it needs to be a priority where we try to nail that down on what that park would be, how many acres, what we want to have in that park, so we can be a little more proactive, because I can tell you, I've got two, two developers now that are talking to me about Zephyr Knoll, the new area on the north side, which is the east side, that they're primarily looking at. All that land is, is being prioritized for development, so, once that goes, and we have the west side as well, but I think we need to really look at that, because once both those areas are, are used up, it's going to be difficult to find a location.
Yeah, but we talked about something at that, on the bottom of the hill, didn't we? In there where that, where the little lake is or pond and what?
Yeah, we've looked at a couple of different opportunities down there, yes.
Charette, design charette?
Yeah.
Yep.
And I think that same true, same holds true for Shepherd's Park, you know, on a, on a heavy rain, that place fills up, and, you know, that's, while, you know, that's not great for playground equipment, it's fine if you're using that as soccer field, you know, on, on the weekends for fun. So, I mean, that's really, if we can get that land for, because it's not developable, you know, that's, that would, or it's not ideal for development, for housing or something like that, that would be ideal, I think.
You just don't want your ball fields to flood on a regular basis because you lose the Bermuda turf. Well, great, so the, my parting words on this plan are, celebrate your successes. I'm here for questions, certainly, but when, when you open your new playgrounds, tell the public, have, make a big deal out of it, y'all have a lot of really great things going for you, and it's been a pleasure to be able to work on this project, so definitely brag.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, I'm, go ahead, Mel.
Nope.
Be sure, and I appreciate it, and, and I didn't know, didn't we have some special needs equipment for special needs children included with everything? And I think that's something we should try and do, because in the Rotary, they did a program, and it, you, you don't know how much that means to a parent with a special needs kid if they can go and play at the playground with their, with their other siblings. The, the other thing I was, ah, shoot, I lost it, but, but I, but I do think, I think we've got to work on our parks, I know what it was. I totally agree with Eric Freeman, who said we need to get the bathrooms open, because I probably get more calls on that than anything. So, if there's a bathroom there, we need to try and have it open. You're, you're right, people, older people walking around.
Yeah.
Need it, younger people, a mom with a three-year-old and an infant, no way is she going to make it to, to a place to take her kids to the bathroom without an accident. So, I think we really need to work on that, so, thank you.
Agreed.
Mel?
I agree with you, thank you. Is this what's going to be like the public kind of thing? Okay, there's just a couple of things can I ask about then?
Sure.
On it? So, when it has Cruz and Park, there's still this line item that says potential community center and aquatic center over there? I don't know that that is.
That's what you taught, you had talked about with the county, I think.
Right, but I mean, is that still, should that still be on, I don't want people looking at this and saying, this is what we're deciding, right? Does that make sense? Is that still a, I didn't think that was a viable last meeting we talked, that wasn't.
Well, I don't, I don't know that Pasco, I mean, based on the, the bonds that they just, or I mean, yeah, the bonds that they just issued, that it's, it's a today, it's not viable today, but it could be in a couple of years, and we could keep that on there. I think we keep it on there, because then the citizens can say, hey, Commissioner, fill in the blank, we'd like to see you guys build or help build or partner with the city to put a rec center in Zephyr Hills, you know.
Does that say in conjunction with Pasco County?
It, it says potential community center and aquatics. I just, I just know the way everybody is.
So, so maybe we do put an asterisk on that that says.
Partnership.
Partnership with Pasco.
Because the minute you put that out there, people are going to believe we're going to build it, and, and it's not.
And, and it's not, we don't have the funds for that. We, we know that. So that was my, yeah, that was my concern because you guys know how glad we got beat up when everybody wanted a water.
We didn't, we weren't the ones who shut it down either.
We didn't shut it down, but we got. And then, okay, so then then on this other, where it says other projects, it says a new recreation center in collaboration with county will replace Alice Hall. I don't think that's accurate either. It says we'll replace existing Alice Hall and provide the community with space for recreation program. So the idea behind that is Alice Hall is on Zephyr Park, obviously, which is already very built out as part of the new master plan. And so the idea is if there is a new recreation center, the space that's provided in Alice Hall for the baby showers and weddings and all that, to replace that space in a recreation center if it happens, so you don't have to continue to have Alice Hall, which has passed its useful life. So we've already made the decision that Alice Hall is going to stay over there in a different, but different way, which you may not have that. Okay. Information, that current information that the, that we talked about that.
Alice Hall.
Right, rebuilding it. Yes.
It could be a mixed use.
Yeah. Yeah. So I just think maybe some of that.
We worded.
Burbage needs to be tweaked a little only, I just know the minute this hits the press, then this is, these are the things we're going to get. Yes. Thank you. Parks people, we have parks people here that are on our parks board. And then I, I certainly would love to learn more about this county partnership thing that. Kim looking at me.
I can tell you that we had conversations with Mr. Wiley about a partnership. We missed out on the $40 million bond issuance that is being, I'm sorry.
Zephyr Hills missed out on the bond issuance that is going to Dade City where they're going to build an aquatic center, a hardened building, all of those things. But that doesn't mean that in the meantime, we cannot partner. Right now, we don't have a, a recreation department that puts on things in the park. We, we have Hercules Park, we're going to have Zephyr Hills Park or Zephyr Park done. Is there a way that we can partner with the county to create those programs to do some things in our park that create activity while we work on our own department ourselves? Those were the question, or those were the talks that we had. It was initially about how we started this was Kristen and her team, we started talking about cruising. Well, that didn't work. So then it was like, okay, how can we help? I can tell you that, you know, Mr. Wiley's response to my, or to our discussion was city is Zephyr Hills residents or county residents? And, and my job is to provide, you know, services to our residents. So how can we help you? And that's really as far as we got in the conversation. So I mean, when we have more, we will certainly report it, but that's how, that's kind of what we're talking about. Good. Okay. Good. That makes me feel, because I'm like.
But we've had some very specific recommendations. I just want to make sure someone's taking notes because we'd like to see that on the revised, revised.
Right. Yep, we've got it. Our team's got that. Absolutely.
Yeah, just two quick, real, real quick. One on the bathrooms, I totally agree with that, but I think what was going to have to happen is we're going to have to put some money in there for some security lighting because I think that's probably the main problem we have with it. So we have to really upgrade the lighting there, but I do think that needs to be done. And then follow up again on Steve's thing. So we're talking short-term implementation of, and you came up with some standards, you know, you use a two-acre park as an example. I think we need to start letting the planning department start implementing that kind of stuff right now because I know they've done a good job of getting some things, but I'm sure it's always scaled down from what their initial thoughts were. But if we have some standards there that they can shade, this is what we're looking for and we have something to back it up and they don't have to negotiate all the time.
And that's part of the reason why we put these recommendations together. So you all are holding yourselves to your own standards too. So developer can't come back and say, well, you're asking me to do that, but you're not doing that yourself. So we were really conscientious about that through the recommendation process to make sure that we were looking at what parks need a sport court, what parts need, parks need walking trails, that type of thing.
Right. Thank you.
What park needs sight lighting.
All that, yes.
Also want to, I agree, Councilman Burgess, we got to do something with the bathrooms and not only lighting, but I think maybe even think about surveillance because if we got people going in there destroying them, we need to make them pay for it. So I would think about some sort of surveillance at these bathrooms, especially our newer parks.
From our Parks and Rec Board, I don't know if they'd like to ask some questions or, or not, you know?
I mean, do you guys have any?
Any?
Your comment about.
Come on up.
Yeah, come on up, Trace.
Hi, and I'm Tracy Mahon with the parks. Y'all are, I'm short anyway, but you're really making me shorter. So talking about, actually, I think you did, Mr. Burgess, when you were talking about planning now, because we have all this development, we're not asking them to do anything, but here you go, we're going to get their money. But we're not asking them to do something for the city. And I live right by that one place that has no park in it, several homes in it. And it's a mile and a half, almost two miles for me to get two-eight park, the closest to me. You have all these kids. We already talked about, I already made comments previously about the sidewalks on Wire Road. I almost hit a kid the other day and I know it's the county, but I almost hit a kid because he had dark clothes on again at 6:30 in the morning. So we really need lighting. We talked about lighting, making sure there's lighting at the parks. The doors, do we automatically lock those or do we have to have an individual go lock those doors at all the parks? They're on a timer now.
I didn't know that. Yes.
So, yeah.
Personally, I understand that we would perfectly park with timer was synchronized to the event.
Yeah.
And people can prop them open. So timers, you know, you still have to make sure, have the police run through, somebody make sure they haven't been propped open.
Yeah.
And as being in banking, when you have any type of, the lights go off, we have a power outage or whatever, you want to check your timers because they'll automatically change without you even realizing it. Because I'm having that same issue, but I wanted to tell you that. And security, you know, I'm not very big. If I wanted to go to a park later in the day, I wouldn't go right now, to be honest with you, after dark.
Tracy, can I just add, is it because they're not well-lit or why? Why, why is that? Why would you not do that?
There's no security.
Interesting.
That's interesting because I, I walk, I walk in Veterans Park every morning and now it's dark when we go there. And there's never anyone there. I don't, I don't feel unsafe at all because it really is surrounded by houses and people and dogs and things like that. So I don't worry too much about that, but you're right. There are some areas where they're in the city, maybe, maybe Zephyr Park, although I think our homeless coalition has done a great job of helping folks become reunited with their families or get social service help, things like that. But I think there are still people who are staying in the park after hours. So that would make me a little nervous.
Sorry, I know this isn't really the parks, but you also have businesses that are in town, right down the one-way street here, that I will not go to because there's several homeless people sitting there and I would never go in the door. So you talked about homeless people, there's some places in the city that homeless people are sitting there and I personally am not going because security reasons again.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the parks? Do we have any more questions?
Thank you very much.
I'd like to say you did a great presentation, very informative, and I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you all very much. It's really been a pleasure. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will get with Kristen, we will make those changes that you asked for and the clarifications in it and, and present it to you.
Thank you. And Mayor, thank you for bringing that up because that definitely would have happened if that had been, if that had been left in there.
We just need to look at it as a resident, looking at it for the first time, it's never been.
Thank you. City manager, do we have anything else? All right, then I'll move on to the mayor's announcements.
I don't have any, thank you.
City manager's announcements?
Yes, sir. I have community development director, Todd Vanderburg, to talk about a couple of different projects that you've seen several emails on, there's been discussions on. One is the Murphy property and the other is the Clark's Landing property or subdivision.
Good evening. Todd Vanderburg, planning director for the city. As Billy mentioned, yeah, we have these two land use petitions that we've become aware of, you know, the city and the county reciprocating this one. There's petitions that are going on, they share with us, we share with them. And that provides us the opportunity to talk and communicate with each other about any comments or concerns that we might have. And so there's, there's two that we've identified. And kind of what, how this got started is, once I became aware of them, we found out that they were going on to the planning commission, county planning commission, these two land use petitions. And I, I wasn't aware of it, didn't have the opportunity to comment, make recommendations on it. So, you know, I reached out to the county planning staff and what they did do is they agreed to continue both land use action items, which I thanked them for, appreciated that. And that's when I got with the city manager, we talked about it, discussed the two projects and decided that we should, staff should communicate with our mayor or city council and share the details and some of the comments that we had on these. And so from that, you know, I prepared an email with some of the comments and concerns that we wanted to share. And in, in that email, we talked about some of the proactive planning that we're doing. They're updating their comprehensive plan, we're updating our comprehensive plan, talked a little bit about the, the water use permit and the updates that we got on that through the Water Management District. Brought up the, the ongoing city residential moratorium on land use action items regard to residential and just wanted to make sure that they were up to date and knew that we had continued that, even though we got our water use permit from the district. And again, the comprehensive plan updates and the visioning, you know, that we're planning to do. And I, I think a particular concern is just having the opportunity, be aware of some of the, the planning, land use actions that are occurring in and around Zephyr Hills that we, we have a JPA, a joint planning area that wraps around the city, boundary limits. And in that JPA, we also have an existing and a proposed utility service area. So, and now, as we know, everyone, everyone's aware of this, we, we got to look at these land use decisions. We're, we're looking at it. We, we decide to pause a little bit. And so, and of course, a lot of it has to do with the water. You folks have talked about the transportation. So we're going to do some visioning coming up and, you know, some of the ideas that we had was that we passed on to them was, this is everything that we're doing. Perhaps while you guys are updating your, your comprehensive plan, perhaps what, what you could do is work with us. So I will say that the, I also had a meeting with the county planning, growth management administrator, David Engel and some of his staff, and talked about some of these things that we're sharing. So they're aware of that, both attorneys that are representative of these two developments, they're aware as well because they were copied on the, the email. So we, we suggested, you know, why don't we schedule some meetings where we're planning some visioning so we can talk about the vision for some of these areas, including this area, we'll call it the northeast area of the city. So we, we want to take a proactive stance. There's a lot of county MPUDs going on in the city, 40s and 50-foot wide lots, town homes. It's very, very common in the county. And again, we're not saying we're opposed to residential, but we, we do want to look at the compatibility, character suitability of these land use actions. And on the dais, you see you have two, two projects. We could start with the, the Clark's Landing. That's on Old Lakeland Highway. It's north of County Road 54. It's right in the, that bend of Old Lakeland Highway and it's bordered by Old Lakeland Highway and the CSX Railroad where it butts up to. And they're proposing their 40 and 50-foot wide lots. That area also happens to be a part of what, what y'all have seen before. It's been a while since we pulled it out, but the, the city's industrial corridor master plan, we show that as a future expansion of our industrial area, feel like it'd be very appropriate for industrial. And we're not here to argue the land use, but we want to make our comments known that, you know, y'all saw when we did our transportation mobility element, we got that wraparound Zephyr Hills, the Zephyr Hills bypass that goes up to Otis Allen. So our thinking is probably from Otis Allen south, it's probably appropriate for us to consider land use actions for, for industrial in that, in that area. You know, it butts up to the railroad. Right now, that plan shows a small lots button up to that railroad. That one, getting into the technical part of it, it has a, it's allowed right now as one acre per, one home per acre. So that, that's both on the future land use and the zoning.
Which one is that one, Todd?
It's Clark's Landing, the one on Old Lakeland Highway.
So the future land use, tell me what it, what it is now?
It allows one, one unit per acre.
So I thought that when the county looked at something like that, they considered the future land use heavily.
Yeah, so they're proposing a future land use change and rezoning to MPUD to allow development with 40 and 50 foot, 40 and 50-foot wide lots on that particular one. So that one probably we have a big concern and I shared those comments with, with the county.
How, how many acres is this one?
I think Clark's Landing is about 78 acres.
And, you know, that, that just gives you, gives you an idea of, in here, they have one acre park.
And I think we're going to pull.
I mean, to just give you an idea.
And this is the, the other one. Yeah, if we could scroll over to the right there and to Old Lakeland Highway.
They're in our, they're in our.
Right there, yeah, it can go up.
Planning area.
Well, this one is just outside our JPA utility service area. Here, here's the, here's the area where you see the bend in Old Lakeland Highway. It's on both sides there of Old Lakeland Highway. And.
This is oriented south?
No.
Is this plan oriented correctly?
Yeah, it's on both sides of the road.
Yeah, it's a little further north, I'm sorry.
There we go.
There we go.
Yeah, that's it. That's it.
That area, that and that, yeah, that's it. So you can see on the, the diagram or the preliminary development plan, all the lots in blue are 40-foot wide lots and the ones in orange are 50-foot wide lots, single-family residential detached homes.
So the ones on the west side are 50 and the east side are?
Most of them.
Yeah, most of them. There's a few on the west side, but correct.
But you're just objecting to this with the county?
Well, I, I think you look at the character of the area, y'all have been down Old Lakeland Highway, you can see it's very rural out there. A lot of these lots are a couple acre that you see along Old Lakeland Highway. And our opinion is what we, what we would suggest is they either build on one acre lots where they, if they want to change the future land use and zoning, we, we feel like we'd like the county to work with us on our industrial quarter master plan. David Engel was a part of that in the beginning and there was support earlier on, but then they did their own independent study, which we weren't a part of. they did their own independent study, which we weren't a part of. And they stopped it just on the north side of this, so.
So Todd, this one's just outside the JPA, correct?
Correct.
So, so the other, so we have the smaller lot sizes that, that we don't like and we don't think that is the proper development in this area. One of the questions that has to be discussed is, we have a water line that runs along Old Lakeland Highway, but we also have a housing moratorium that's in place. So the question is, are we going to supply water to this subdivision?
I would say no.
On top of everything that Todd has just spoken about?
On their land use petition and staff report, they show the city is the most likely, because this county has no utility, well, we have what Billy just mentioned, but they identify it, the city is most likely to provide the utility services.
Yeah, and our water lines are, well, it doesn't go up that, does it? Or is it right at the, it's at the intersection of 54 and Chance here?
I'm pretty sure it runs along Old Lakeland Highway.
I think it does.
Where does it go?
It connects to Otis Allen.
Up to Richland?
Is it Otis Allen?
I think it goes all the way to Richland Road.
Does Otis Allen have a water line?
No, it's Richland.
Richland's a little further north.
Yeah, we, all's 11 and 12 that are up on Richland.
Right, right. So yeah.
Well, we don't have water for us in the city. We're, even with the permit, we don't have, we can only do what's in the queue, so.
Right, I agree.
Well, that's where we shared, we feel like, hey, we got this process we're going through, we're updating our comp plan, we're gonna do visioning, updating the water permit, we're gonna go look for new water, where John and his team are doing utility infrastructure master plan and we just got that. So now we know, and staff, we're continuing to work on that. How much water do we need to serve the city undeveloped properties first? And then you, we can maybe look at the other areas and the JPA maybe prioritize those because water's becoming an issue and we're gonna have to look at that very comprehensively. And before we do, us providing water to some of these areas without having that planning completed, there's some concerns at the staff level.
Yeah, I mean, it's irresponsible for them to assume that they're gonna be able to use the water line because we haven't, I mean, everything that we've said publicly is, we're not, we're not doing any more high density residential, you know?
So in the email, I suggested maybe they could consider pausing as we have until we can, both city and county, we complete our comprehensive plan process, we do the visioning.
Who's the owner?
With Clark's Landing.
Somebody Clark. What's the question? What was the question?
The ownership, it's a development group thing.
Yeah. See, it's. It was, I think it was Jackie Clark, but it's a, I don't have the, the name.
Yeah.
Yes.
So if I could ask one other question, is there, are there county water lines and county sewer lines out there?
No.
Okay, so.
Now, and the thing is that, you know, the attorneys will tell you, well, we just want to go through the entitlement process and.
That's right.
Get the land use, the zoning place for all these units and then, you know, we'll figure out the water. But I, I think it's presumptuous to do that until we've gone through the planning process and we know if we're, where we're gonna have water, where it comes from and how much we're gonna have and where we want to provide it to.
And we're going through that process currently?
Yeah.
And even if we did, it might not, this might not be the use that we'd recommend.
Well, not with our industrial corridor. The land, as we've seen, Mitec, we turned down a residential developer and now we have a industrial that's using a rail spur on that property. You have limited properties that have rail access, so again, not that we're against residential, but we feel like there's areas that are more suitable, appropriate for the residential. And if we're gonna do residential, you see the area, there, there's nothing in the area that has a character established for 40 and 50 foot wide homes, so.
So Todd, Todd, you know, on a level for us, so I met with one of the commissioners to kind of say, can you please stop this around us, right? That we're, for one thing, we're being boxed in and our residents can't get out of our town. And for a second, we just, there's too much growth. And the first thing was, you know, we need this places for people to live here. I, I don't know, I mean, for us, do we go to all five county commissioners? I went to one. Do I keep going to the other four and let them throw that in my face too? What do we do to help support this?
Well, I think that, we wanted to communicate with, with you folks first and kind of give you an update. We sent the letter out, we're talking about Clark's Landing now, the next one we can chat a little bit about is the, the other one, Forbes and County Road 54. We did get a response back from the attorney representing that project. Yeah, I think it's, yeah, what is the direction from council for, to direct staff in next steps? And I, you know, the other, the other factor here is the, the JPA, we've talked about expanding that. I think it needs to be expanded and include this property because right now it's out. And we talked about the utility service area as well. The other thing, the interlocal agreement between the city and the county expires, I believe, at the end of this calendar year. So we've talked also about the update of the interlocal agreement between the city and the county. And I think we gotta really look at the crafting and updated interlocal agreement where we have some more teeth that we can have more say, because we should have a say in the JPA, the area around Zephyr Hills and how it's developing and so.
Well, Todd, I thought, I talked to you about this, but I thought what you put out there in those notes and the, and the letter you sent would hit on all the key things that we're, we're discussing. And, you know, going back to the industrial corridor, you know, there was a lot of economic development stuff that was spent, you know, talking about Old Lakeland Highway maybe being a bypass around both the towns, connecting Dade City and Zephyr Hills, a whole industrial corridor, they got their business center on that end. I mean, this, this is in Dade City's benefit too. I mean, I know the project is down by us, but in reality, that industrial corridor and, you know, some of the stuff that was, you know, talked with the PDC and all that through all them years, it's, it would be kind of a waste to, you know, progressing in a good way. And I hate to see that get, you know, kind of trampled on, so I think you're, you're not hitting on the right things. And then the water too, I mean, obviously, we spent two and a half hours or two and a half years trying to get water for the projects in the queue, like you said, so we wanted to set ourselves back another two and a half years.
Yeah, and I don't think it's appropriate for them to assume that we're gonna supply their water. I mean, especially where we just did a moratorium ourselves.
And that's not in the utility service area either.
Correct. We're under no obligation to provide them water or sewer, right?
Well, we can.
Not to my knowledge. I mean, I mean, but if we had it, we're, we're not under any obligation?
No, but once they change the land use and all of that, you know, they're going to, it's, it's, it's never gonna get changed back, you know?
Why don't you send us a copy of the letter you sent to the county and we can use those points? We'll have the, all the information in your letter.
And I think we do, I think we need to, because when I spoke to a commissioner, they're like, well, David Engel knows what he's doing, so I'm trusting that he knows what he's doing. I'm not saying David Engel doesn't know what he's doing. Obviously, he's really brilliant at his job. I just need them to understand, go ahead, put that over there in Wesley Chapel, we're, we don't need more over here, we're okay.
And, and you know, we're respectful of, of, you know, of, of an individual's right to develop their property, but I think that if we recognize that having all these homes in that concentrated area, suddenly we have tractor trailer traffic that's going 50 miles an hour on our bypass.
Right.
And you have these residential, you know, 600 cars.
Right.
On a busy day and at 8:00 AM and they're trying to get out, you know, that just doesn't make any sense. And now we're putting in stoplights like we did out on Island Boulevard and everybody's complaining about having to wait in traffic.
And we loosen industrial user because they don't want to go through all the traffic.
That's right.
Well, as Tom Ryan, I remember him telling me, don't, don't gum up your industrial corridor roadways with residential because it's gonna keep the industrial away. Probably some truth to that. And probably just briefly, the, the other land use is on the, the intersection of, we'll bring it up on the aerial, but it's at the intersection of County Road 54 and Forbes Road. That's the Murphy property and.
Now, there is some residential in that area, the challenge is the density of this, you know, they're not sharing that, but these yellow single family homes, if those are 40 foot lots, again, now you're looking at.
Those are 50 foot.
Well, this one started off with, this one started off with over 600 units. Clark got a copy of our letter that we had sent out. He did make a significant reduction from, it's actually 672 units that was being proposed there. They did reduce it to 434 units. He took out the townhomes and took out the smaller lots and went up to 55 foot wide lot as the minimum lot size with seven and a half foot side yard setback. Increased the buffers a little. Now, this one's a little different. It has a, an RMH on the zoning currently, so they can build a mobile home park. And they got the future land use at Res 9, so that's nine units per acre. So if they were, if we were just saying, no, we don't want this residential MPUD, I mean, in theory, they, they could go and build a mobile home park there.
But you sent us a letter, I don't know if you did or the city manager did, and he said from Clark, where he said that they need the water, they can pay for a county to extend it, that they've done the, cut these units down to the 400 something, but if we don't help them, they might have to go back up to their 670.
Yeah, there was comments about that and we don't know exactly what, what it would look like for them to help us in the water. We could have some more discussions, I would say, on that. On your plan there, the larger plan that I provided, I, just to talk about it a little You can see I highlighted some areas and really, some of the concern here again is, it's a very rural area. You do have a mobile home park there, that, all that pink there right next to them and then, of course, south side of County Road 54, but then you go north on, on.
Forbes.
Forbes Road, thank you. You see, it's very rural in that area, I highlighted the lot sizes. You know, most of them are acre, acre and a half, two and a half acres, five acres. So in the middle of that, what's being proposed now, it is a better situation than what they started off with, but it'd be 55 foot wide homes. And I, I think there's some additional discussions that we could have with them on this. I'd like to see the buffers. They increased some of the buffers. I would say that the wider buffers and with the higher walls should be in areas that butt up to some of those existing developed out areas is one recommendation. You can also do cluster subdivisions where you can have much wider perimeter buffers around that we suggested, I suggested.
But then you want to go with smaller lots because you're built, you're eating up, you know?
Yeah, which probably it'd be okay if you have some smaller lot sizes, but then you got a much larger buffer around the entire perimeter and you, you increase the landscaping and buffering and screening around that as an option.
But this is another case of we don't have the water.
Yeah, same situation with the water. They've, they've talked, talked about running a pipeline all the way from Silverado.
Well, there's a couple of differences between this one and the other one in that this is in our utility service area, the other one was not.
JPA and USA.
And I was gonna bring this up and talk about it during my announcements, but there's a very good likelihood that we're gonna have to repeal our moratorium on housing due to Senate Bill 180. We've been researching it as a team at my firm and we thought there was gonna be built in some loopholes for infrastructure issues, but those did not make it into the final bill. So it prohibits moratoriums for any, anything.
SB, SB 180, that's the live local, right? It's part of the live local.
No, this is the storm, storm water emergency management. It changed to about 12 different statutes, but it's basically if you're with, what matters for purposes of this discussion, because there's a lot contained in 180, is if you're within 100 miles of the eye of a hurricane, you cannot change your land use, land development code or put in moratoriums, change the land development code to make it more restrictive on development or prohibit development through a moratorium for one calendar year from the time of the storm, if you're within 100 miles.
What does the storm have to do with it? We didn't do it because of the storm?
I understand.
At our.
But the language of the statute is very clear that it prohibits any moratorium and for these, they're retroactive back to, what was the first storm, Dark? It's retroactive back to Debbie for jurisdictions within 100 miles of that storm, which we're, we, we qualify for the 100 miles on all of them for last year, but.
In the middle.
Yeah. So we're, we haven't brought, I haven't brought it to you yet because we're still trying, everybody's analyzing and trying to figure out exactly if there's a way around it, but it looks like it's prohibiting all moratoriums and land use changes, no matter what. And all of ours happened before the bill was passed, but my reading of the statute that they changed, the way it's being codified is it's going back to the time of the prior storms, so.
But, but we don't have to provide water service, water and sewer service, so that, you know?
If they're in our utility service area, I don't, I don't know that we.
That's the question, if we don't have the water, how do we provide something we don't have? I think that's the question, yeah.
And who, who brought, who brought all that to our attention? It was developers, correct?
Well.
No, actually, the, the, well. Actually, it was one of our, well, Matt had been looking at it, it was actually one of our code officers asked the question on a code case and we looked at it and realized it pertained to moratoriums and the restrictions, not on the code case, but on our rules that we've just put in place.
So I sat through that one class at our city conference and because there were the other communities that were in that and we didn't fall in that. So I sat through that class and, and our, our area was not on their list. So that, there was specific areas that were, that were, but, and so I went, okay, we're all right. So reach out to, let's look at that, because I did sit through that class on, I think I was the only one in that particular class, I made notes somewhere, but there were specific areas and we weren't in that area.
Yeah, there's, the, the problem too is, when I first looked at it, it was League of Cities, Florida Municipal Attorney Association, which is part of League of Cities, put out something on it early on, but it was before it was signed and, and before the session was over, I guess, there, there's multiple versions and changes of it, so I don't know what information they had at the, when they prepared that presentation that they gave at League of Cities, but the way that we're looking at it, at least at me and a couple of the other local government people, including Dark Matt, at Shoemaker is, we think it's gonna apply to us and it's gonna be retroactive. Now, we haven't pulled the trigger to really give a final opinion yet because there's a bunch of talks about interpretation, different interpretations, but I don't see the argument for other interpretation. I've read it four or five times and pretty clear to me that it says no moratoriums and.
Well, the moratorium's retroactive to, to when? To Hurricane Debbie?
I, I think it's Hurricane Debbie, but there was, it was Debbie, Helene and Milton, right, for last year, yeah, yeah.
But we had our moratorium a year before.
That's what I'm saying, or more than a year.
Not our renewed moratorium, our moratorium. Not our renewed moratorium. Our moratorium was only for one year, and then we had to renew it.
And.
But couldn't we make the argument that it's an ongoing moratorium? It was well predated to hurricanes?
Why would they tell us we can't have a moratorium on future growth? What does that have to do with the hurricane?
I have no idea.
And even if we withdraw the, the moratorium, which we were, the idea was really just keep it till we got the water use permit, we can approve it develop, we can say, all right, you can annex in, or you can put plans, but we can't serve you any utilities.
Yeah, so, correct. So, that's everything that we're looking at, trying to understand exactly what it is, but Matt and I were talking, and thought it was important to bring up tonight because of the conversation, um, but we, clearly, we don't have all the answers, and how it's imposed, um, and why it's imposed, that's, that's a whole nother.
Who introduced this bill? What senator?
Burgess.
Are you kidding? Are you kidding me?
So, he's the one we need to talk to. Session is early in January this year.
Senator Bill one eighty?
Yes, sir.
Andy Burgess.
Yes, sir. Well, sessions, sessions in January.
Who's he work for?
Oh, I, I'm just a messenger here. We're trying to figure out how, how it impacts us, and can we have the moratorium, can we not have the moratorium?
Why don't we wait, keep it until somebody challenges?
That's, that's what I'm saying. Session is in January this year, and it's only a couple of months off to begin with, and and, and what is the, what is the entire bill? I'm sure that's just one aspect of the bill. What's the entire bill have to do with?
There's, there's all kinds of aspects.
That's what I'm saying, the Senate Bill one eighty is.
There's a giant section on basically what local governments can't do. There's also a bunch of mandates on what we have to do with regards to storm water management, storm water, um, emergency management plans.
Well, that's what it started off as.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but then there's a, there's a bunch of preemptive language, which I believe was all intended to only impact, what I believe the intent is, is i- i- if, after the storm, local governments can't go in and tell these people they can't rebuild their house because they have a moratorium, but they can't, um, uh, they don't fall under the, the zoning category anymore. They did away with some of the cumulative substantial damage improvement, flood zone stuff for a year after the storm, so basically, it was trying to prevent local government from going and telling all these people that live on the coast that they can't rebuild their homes because the things changed. But that's not what the, what the bill got printed, what it says exactly. I think the, the intent was that, that's why we're reading the comments a- and debate through the bill to try to come up with arguments of why we're making certain decisions, why nothing formal's been brought to you yet. I mean, it also, if you're in violation of it, someone has to give us a written notice under the statute, and then we have fourteen days to comply with the statute or before they can file suit, so that hasn't happened yet. Uh, any formal notice or, or what, you know, we would have had to do, make a decision, but we're trying to, looking at the intent, to me, you know, it was brought up about our storage ordinance that was passed, and that we couldn't make that change because it was within store. I don't think the bill intends that at all, but the language is, i- i- it doesn't say that. If you read the plain language of the law, which all the case law says we have to do, I think it prohibits even that change, so we're, it's way more complicated than, than I think I'm making it out to be even tonight. It, it, there's a lot to it. Um, but I just wanted to put on your radar, there's a potential that we can't rely on those moratoriums for this purpose. Whether we have water or not, like, again, yeah, I agree, we have problems, we gotta figure it out, but we just, he, Billy suggested I go ahead and bring it up now during this conversation.
Yeah, I, I think the key is, we're not, and I, and I, Mayor, I heard you, don't, don't jump yet, and we're not, but the, the, the reason was because it could pertain to the conversation that we're having, and what we are allowed to do or not to. So, it's, the idea was to bring it up, put it on the radar, let everybody be aware of it, but we're not making a decision one way or the other. We're still trying to figure it all out, to be honest with you. Um, question about allowing development without the services. Um, the City of Auburndale had a conversation with, um, Jeff Tillman there, um, and I need to get the documents from him, but what they do is they approve the developments. Um, but the developer signs an agreement stating that they understand that there's not, in their case, they don't have sewer capacity. So, you can build, but you're building dry lines, and once the capacity becomes available, then you can go hot. Um, so that's something that we'll reach out to them and get those documents to see if that's, if council's interested that we can potentially, um, apply to the city where we can allow developments, but there're gonna be dry lines until the water's available. Your mic's off.
Mike. Sorry. The sewer line is that you can eventually build a sewer treatment plan, and you can eventually, but we can't manufacture more water.
Well, so, part of what we're doing is we're, we're actually, right now, we're looking at, um, the potential of drilling, well, sorry, we're modeling areas north of the city that's in the Withlacoochee Basin, um, that has, that's less restrictive on water, um, pulling of water. So, we're looking at that. Um, there's an option and of looking at, uh, Pasco County and tying into them. They have a different treatment system. Um, so, in fairness of everything that was, that was spoken about, there's been conversations of the, um, the Murphy property, um, contributing to the connection, making the connection to Pasco County and, and having water capacity via that route. Um, again, conversation, nothing in writing. We're also looking at, we, well, I don't know how much, how hard we're looking at, but there's a conversation that was had, looking at Dade City, could they potentially, um, we have it interconnect currently, can they provide water to the, to us? They're in the same boat that we are currently, uh, but there is also another business, um, that's on the north side of Dade City that has a large permitted capacity. They've presented here before. We've had conversations there as well. Um, each of those options that I just mentioned have their pros and cons, and have their dollar, dollar amounts associated with them. So, we're looking at all of that as well. Um, so, you're correct, pulling water from the Hillsborough Basin in our area, um, is very unlikely, um, but there are, are other options. Um, and if we're able to find wells very similar to what we did with the Evans Orsi agreement, you know, find some ag wells that we could take that capacity transfer to our, our, um, permit, we'll always look at that. But then there's always that little caveat that you have to be able to show the demand to, before they'll give you the water.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, is like, you can't manufacture more water, but, I mean, kinda can't. It's gonna come down to, are projects in place, we're requiring, um, a, a payment of fifty percent of the capacity fee, uh, to reserve it for cer- certain number of years, and if they don't pay that, i- it's whoever signs up for it first is who gets in line, and, and the rest may have to wait. Where, and so, I, I, from my understanding of how this permit process went in the direction we're given is, as more projects like this come online, and we actually get the payment, and we hook up, you know, guaranteed utilities, then the other projects, um, that are proposed are in the line, or whether they happen or not, you know, I, I don't know, but they, they'll have to wait their turn, but we use those to go show the Water Management District that he- here's our new demand, and it, they readjust it at that time. Uh, I don't, I don't understand it exactly, but.
Well, I guess my point being is that we can't be required, the retroactive thing about Debbie, if the reason we didn't allow the development because we didn't have water, that hasn't changed.
Right, so, we, staff and, and the attorney agree one hundred percent with the statement that you just made. The problem is, is that the language, the way, the way the statute's written, it doesn't take that into account, from, from the way we look at it.
The moratorium's not important, then?
So, we don't have the moratorium, but we get to the point, can't stop it by a moratorium, but when you get to the point of issuing the, we're just gonna have to, you know, at the application time, we're gonna have to have these understanding agreements that you're at your own risk. We don't know if we're gonna have the capacity or not.
And what we, we have to look at is, we have to have a policy, then. Do we want to annex more? And if we don't, we have to recognize that, then they'll develop in the county, and we'll still have the issues, but we can amend our utility service agreement and, 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 and not provide water within a certain area, and then.
Yeah, that's where some of that visioning, I think, is gonna come into play, where we gotta really bunker down and, and look at that.
The moratorium doesn't matter now. We got the permit. We can do what we want with that. I mean.
The only reason we brought it up is because we're saying, well, we have a moratorium, we're not gonna allow it, so, I wanted to bring it up.
Even without the moratorium, we can't permit it, so.
We can not annex.
Then can we not?
Right.
Isn't it our choice to annex or not annex?
Yep.
So, it's like, we don't want the project.
So, sorry, sorry. So, so neither of these projects have asked for annexation at this point.
Correct.
No, they're asking for something that we don't.
Correct, yeah, but I'm just, I'm just making the point that they're not asking for annexation, they're just asking for services.
I understand that, but they're not gonna run a sewer line five miles from Handcart Road to there for those few units.
Exactly, right.
You know, so, it's like, okay, go ahead, I guess, yeah, but the only thing, why would you be irresponsible as a county in doing that without having the water and sewer capacity? They know we, they, we don't have it.
Well, I think.
And it's a, is a.
Uh, maybe this is an after-meeting conversation. Um, I think they would then use it to storm our most.
That's what I'm, that, that's exactly right. You know, you're exactly right.
We've invested all this, you don't give it to us, we're gonna sue you, or, or pour us, whatever. I mean, I think there's a distinction between the two projects in that one's in the utility service area and one's not. I think that's a pretty big distinction.
It is.
Um.
Yeah, but being in the utility service area, does that obligate you to provide somebody with sewer and water?
I think it, it does to a point if, if we have it, yeah.
If that's my point, we don't have it.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know that we don't, though.
Even if it does do that, d- does that obligate us to develop the property on our terms?
Either, I'm just saying.
How do you say we don't have it? We have it.
Well, that's a, that's a conversation that we'll have, and we'll have, uh, develop, uh, we'll have the consultant come in and explain that. Um, because there is a possibility.
What's actually being used and what's not.
Now, then we can use elsewhere.
So, there are, so there are developments that have not paid, so they're not, we've re-
They're in the queue.
They're in the queue list. But they haven't, yeah.
The utility service.
Yeah, they're in the queue, but they've not paid. There are certain levels of approvals that they've gotten, um, up to this point that we've utilized to, um,
I think.
justify the, the demand.
I think there's probably some that have relied on enough approvals that we have a huge liability if we deny them water and sewer, and I think there's some
I agree.
that have not gone that far, that have not, that, I think it, there's, it's a complicated question, but there's a, there's some that have not paid and have not gone through extensive reliance on approvals that would, that would subject us to that liability.
Yeah, but if they were on that.
I think we have to look at all of them.
I- i- if they were on that list, we obligated, in my mind, to providing water.
Maybe they held off because we had a moratorium, so they held off going any further than what they have.
But, um, is there any, on these projects within the queue, is there any procedure that there's a, a deadline or an expiration? Things run out if they don't do certain things and get up into?
I mean, we got a, an expiration date, but generally, in the past, historically, we've allowed them to continue as long as there are no uh, changes to the plans, and of course, we require them to go back through the process and/or any code-related changes. We could have them make necessary changes.
Some of those plans could be extended based on natural disasters as well.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's a good point. I think we need to look at those and notify.
I think we should have a workshop, and I think we should invite Senator Burgess to come here and tell us about it.
And some of those developer people that, that, you know, that have, haven't paid yet, so that they understand that their, their developments are at real risk not being able to move forward.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying about the, I think we do, we, I, I think Councilman Spina brings up a good point, is that we, although we will kind of always let people bypass the expiration date, we're not, we can't hold these capacities up forever, so we need to give some kind of notice to all these people that if they don't take action, but certain, whatever that date is, whatever is reasonable.
And they enter, enter into USA, Utility Service Agreement.
You know, what I've seen in the market is things slowing down some. It's not like two thousand six, seven, eight, but it's, I could see where some of these projects, which that's why we started requiring that fifty percent down, because you know, all I was thinking about was like Hidden Rivers, we're gonna guarantee them this water, and they're gonna sit on it for twelve years, you know?
Right.
And that's when we started requiring the fifty percent down to hold the capacity, and um, I think we do need to probably look at that from a staff level and see, how long have these been sitting? Which ones are sit, you know, we need to come up with, with a date from the date of their application and, and give a formal notice that they're not holding any capacity after a certain date.
Well, and fifty percent today is not the same as fifty percent six years from now, you know, the cost.
Right, and well.
The water, the cost.
Well, I think the agreements are only good for so, I think the last one we did, that they reserve it for five years, and then they, they forfeit their fifty percent and have start over.
Okay.
Well, I think it's not good, but I think we need to have a workshop on this. I mean, we're not gonna solve it tonight.
No.
Obviously, we've been talking about it for half an hour.
I need some more time to try to figure out all the impacts of one eighty, because there's.
I mean, I don't know if there's, I mean.
A bunch of different minds differ, legal minds differ, and I, I've seen all kinds of different opinions on it. I, I think it's pretty clear, but there's a lot of analysis going into it, and, and quite a few jurisdictions, from my understanding, have put together a lawsuit against the state over it, so I wanna see if those actually get filed. Looks like class action, actually.
Let's join them.
Yeah, and, and, you know, if, and, and we invite Senator Burgess, maybe, maybe there's some backpedaling that happens this next session, maybe there's some, you know, o- often we make decisions that have unintended consequences. Maybe there's, maybe the action is that we ask him to go back and, and repeal some portion of the, of the agreement, or, you know, kind of neutralize it somewhat.
All right, well.
We did that on, we did that on the, uh, on the, um, live local act, yeah.
Well, on these two projects, then, my understanding is they could move forward to perhaps the October Planning Commission, you know, so that's why we're trying to get some direction, kinda provide the history and kinda what's happened, what we've done, and then the response we got back, and so I, I think, uh, the one on Clark's Landing on Old Lakeland Highway is probably the bigger concern. I, I think there's, uh, I spoke with the city manager, I think there's some additional tweaks that could be done on, uh, the Murphy property to make it more compatible. Um, that one, again, does have the RES nine, uh, future land use density, so, I mean, we could, um, share those additional comments that we had. They've made a, an effort, but it, it's still four hundred and fifty units, and we're shown as likely water providers, so that was the other issue. Are we comfortable with? And I know that's probably a question for Matt, is, you know, how, are we okay with making that recommendation?
Well, now's not the time to expand our planning district or our utility service area.
Well, and that's why we feel, again, you go through the planning process, and we work through all this, yeah.
Right, but then, otherwise, you're held to it. If you're within a district, then you're gonna have more responsibility than if you're without. And if they can sue to get it. Well, let's, anyway, we need a workshop. Yeah, let's just set up a workshop, um, and move forward on that.
Okay, thank you for the time, allowing us to share this information, so.
Thank you, Todd.
Keep you in the loop.
Yep. Do you have anything else, Billy?
Yeah. No, sir, I think that's enough for my, uh, my items tonight.
Thank you.
I will be out of the office Friday. There, there's what I have to add.
All right, city man, uh, city attorney.
I, I don't really have anything. I, I don't write the laws. I just interpret them, and I'm not doing a very good job of that, because I don't understand them all right now, so.
Well, we appreciate you bringing it to our.
We're trying to work through it and see. I think there's a lot of intent there that didn't make it to the black-letter law, and I think there'll probably be some revisions, so we'll see what happens, but we'll keep you, I'll keep you posted, and, and I'll have some kind of memo hopefully soon.
People start adding amendments, and that's the, yeah. Is that all?
That's all I have, thanks.
City Council.
City council comments, Councilman Burgess?
I don't have anything tonight.
Did you? Mayor? Didn't I do the mayor?
Yeah.
Oh, I did the mayor, yeah. I'm sorry. Um, Councilman Spina, my thing. Councilwoman, what is it?
No, nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Councilman Smith?
I'd better not.
Yeah, I, I've got a bunch to say, but I won't say.
I hear you. Well, I don't have anything to say anyway, except meeting adjourned.